Education to Order. We will now recite. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, love it. At this time, I would like to call the June 5th, 2024, Meeting of the Board of Education to Order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the June 5th, 2024 Agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any discussions, additions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the June 5th, 2024 Meeting Agenda carries. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the board meeting on May 22nd, 2024 are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the May 22nd, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes carries. We will begin with comments from Superintendent Coto.
Good evening, Board, staff, and Schenectady community. I want to send a huge thank you to Steve Balag, who organized the World War II Plaque Rededication Ceremony held last Friday. It was a beautiful ceremony and very well attended. Thank you also to the Mount Pleasant musicians, the bagpiper player, the Senator Tedesco, and all of the readers. It was a moving ceremony, and now the plaque honoring the eighty-six graduates who died in World War II is hanging in the entranceway here at Mount Pleasant. I also want to share with the community our school hours for next year. Elementary schools will start at 7:45 a.m. and finish up the day at 2:40 p.m. And then on our half-days, it'll be 7:45 to 11:10. Middle schools will start at 8:30 and close their day at 3:35. We also have extended time, so we have extended learning, so we'll make sure that our students take advantage of our after-school programs. But, and then they'll 8:30 a.m. and 11:45 a.m. for half-days. Our high schools will start at 8:25 and finish their day at 3:30. And then on half-days, they'll start at 8:30 and finish their day at 11:45. We have slowly begun to move our central office team down to Liberty. Right now, we'll have our business offices starting to work their way down to our Liberty location. I'd like to also highlight the Unified Physical Education Celebration, which will be held on Tuesday, June 11th, at 9 a.m. at the Union College Memorial Fieldhouse. We have been looking forward to this event. Thank you to Kimberly Peela for all of her hard work making this happen for our students. Everyone is invited. It will take place all morning up until 1:15 p.m. The last days of school, the last day of school at the high school is on June 13th. Regents exams begin on June 14th. High school students should only report on days they are scheduled to take exams. The schedules and bus schedules for exams is posted on the high school website. This month is Pride Month, which is important because it is important because it is about acceptance, equality, and celebrating the LGBTQ+ community. This must, this month serves as a reminder to engage in conversation, increase understanding, and to promote inclusion. This week, Governor Hokel issued a proclamation designating as, designating June 2024 as LGBT+ Pride Month. LGBT+, LGBTQ+, progression flags will be raised across the state and state landmarks, illuminating in colors of the Pride flag between June 23rd and the thirtieth. This month is also National Caribbean American Heritage Month. This observation recognizes the diverse Caribbean cultures and traditions that have significantly influenced us. Tickets are also on sale for the 2024 Athletic Hall of Fame and reunion dinner, which will be held September 16th at the Event Center at Rivers Casino and Resort. Inductees this year are James Thomas, Tom Chestnut, and Ray Johnson. The Athletic Hall of Fame also holds an annual golf tournament, which will be held the day before the dinner. It is a four-person scramble. Information about the event and how to get tickets is posted on the homepage of the district website and is being shared on our social media sites. We also have a few community things to share, mainly about our roadways. Keen Elementary School has been alerted that a portion of Albany Street between Elm and Kelton will shut down sometime this month due to road repairs. Once we have, once we know when that work will begin, we will inform our families. Our Transportation Department has already been alerted, so they are working with transportation companies to support our students. Also, also, we have been asked to share a survey for transportation study for the Bellevue area. We shared that with the Van Corleone families through district apps and posted on social media. Everyone is invited to share their thoughts. There are sports camps and a variety of activities taking place this summer. Be on the lookout for sign-up information on our website, the app, and social media. Few reminders. There is no school on June 19th in observance of Juneteenth. District office will be closed as well. Since the next Board Meeting of Education is scheduled on June 26th, I also want to remind everyone that June 25th and June 26th are half-days of school for elementary and middle school students. Before I close, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize some of our board members. I'd like to congratulate and recognize Board Member Nohalani, Jamaica, and Bernice for their recent achievements and awards from the New York State School Boards Association, NISBA. There are, there are four achievement levels that can be reached by participating in NISBA trainings, workshops, events, activities, and for taking on various NISBA roles. These are above and beyond mandated trainings. It takes extensive time and effort to earn the various levels of recognition. Congratulations to Board Member Jamaica, who earned a Level One Achievement Award. If I can have Jamaica come up just to be recognized? Board Member Nohalani earned a Level Three Board Mastery Award. So if I can have Nohalani come up? And our Board President earned a Level Four Lifetime Achievement Award. All three of these board members deserve recognition for the, for the work they are doing to expand their knowledge and skills. And I've lost my notes. So if we can give them one more round of applause. That concludes my comments. I'm going to turn it over to our Board President.
Thank you, Superintendent Coto, and thank you, NISBA. Thank you. So Board Members, we'll have an opportunity to share comments related to district or community events, school liaison updates, and/or agenda items. We will begin our board comments with Student Board Representative Zohanna. She will share several items in addition to information about the Living Out Loud Extra Classroom Activity Resolution on the Consent Agenda List later tonight. So, Zohanna?
Good evening, Dr. Coto, President Rivera, and fellow board members. As the Student Board Representative, I would like to talk about the Living Loud Club, which is designed to support student board reps and their work. It will exist as long as there's a student representative on the board. The purpose of this club is to hold circles and speak to students of different communities and ethnicities about issues they are facing within the Schenectady School District. During this time, it will be a safe space for students to share certain things they do not feel comfortable talking to an adult about. Of course, if it is serious, we will have to involve adults. That is why there is an adult advisor that is tied to this club as well. The advisor and student representatives will hold a meeting twice in a month during lunchtime with a sign-in and sign-out sheet. Some great news. The pins, the pins for English language learners are up and running. These pins have already been distributed to a few administrators, teachers, and safety team members who speak a different language. ELO students have already given me feedback on the pins and how helpful it has been. The plan is to work on a rollout plan for the district. On Wednesday, May 29th, we shot our first student rep video. We all had a fun time with, working with Dr. Coto, Ms. Higgins, Ms. Mr. Connolly, and our student actors. Thank you, Dr. Coto, for your time and coming to the high school and being a very, very good actor. Unfortunately, this will be my last board meeting. It has been an honor beyond description to be able to serve on this position, even if it was just for a few months. The changes that had already been made are phenomenal, and I know Joyce is the next representative and will continue to listen to student voices and make amazing changes within the Schenectady School District. I had an amazing time working with the board members and listening to student concerns. I am glad my wonderful team and I were able to come up with solutions. Also, I would like to give a huge shout-out to a specific person in the audience. Ms. Higgins, she's so good. I have, I have no words to express how helpful and amazing she is. Let me just tell you a little fun fact. So during the last board meeting, Ms. Higgins was not available to come to the board meeting due to her daughter's award ceremony. But guess what? As I was reading my document that she, she had with her, or shared like on the Google, she was editing as I'm reading. So she, she was there editing as I'm reading. Like, can you believe how awesome she is? Like helping me while she's not even physically there? And there's even more amazing things she has done. But if I were to start listening, I think this board meeting might end up until like 11 tonight. So thank you. Also, I will be continuing my journey at Hudson Valley Community College. I'm going to be majoring in business and starting my own real estate company soon. On the side, I will also be taking an electrician certificate course offered at Hudson Valley. Thank you so much, everyone, and please don't forget me. I'm still here. And shout-out to Mr. Green.
Okay, we're going to show the little, the video that they created. And the video actually is going to be shared with the school district, so students can have an idea of what the role of the Student Board Representative does. So let's take a look at their acting skills. Brian, do you mind rewinding that?
Miss Langston, where are my student board reps? Many of our students across the district have thoughts, ideas, and sometimes even concerns. I'd like to let you all know that we have our student board reps that you can reach out to. So please, I encourage you to reach out to our student board reps, so that you can provide ways to brainstorm, problem-solve, and then find solutions to those concerns and also those suggestions and ideas that you have.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joyce Pelman. I'm a junior Schenectady high school. I'm a student representative for the school board. I work with the school board to bring your concerns, ideas, and suggestions to the district level. I am your voice in the school district.
Thank you.
My name is Zohanna Huguen. I am a student representative at Schenectady High School. I work with the Board of Education of New York and Board Meeting of the District. Please feel free to reach out to me at my email attached. Let me represent you. Thank you.
Three, two. Oh, I got the two. Go on. Three, two. We need your help.
Are you supposed to say something?
I don't know. Kind of saying. I'm looking at your reaction.
A whole house is itching, okay?
What an awesome job. We do want to thank Mr. Eric Connolly, the high school social studies, STEM, economics, and visual performance arts teacher, and Ms. Karina Higan. Just kind of raise your hand, right? The advancement via individual determination, also known as avid coordinator and student rep advisor for supporting and guiding our students to create this awesome video. And of course, our Schenectady City School Grammy Award winners. Zohanna, Joyce, and Superintendent Coto. Great job, great job. Love it. And Zohanna, we are so honored to have had you on the board these months. It's been amazing. You have been very inspirational to all of us. You have reminded us why student voice is so important and why we need to continue to have student voice on the board. I appreciate your diligence, your hard work, and your dedication to being on the board and all your innovative ideas. You too, Joyce. I mean, your innovative ideas, like this video is amazing, and there's many others. So we will truly miss you. You will always be welcome here, okay? So we love you. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you. And now we will continue with board comments. We'll start with Kathy and then Amanda.
Good evening, everyone. I want to echo Carlos's comments regarding the World War II presentation on Friday night. It was a very moving ceremony. The bios, not bios, but tales were told about six of the young men, and it was always pointed out that they walked these halls prior to their, their deaths in World War II. As I said, it was a very moving ceremony. On Saturday, I was able to attend Scrabble Rama. And lo and behold, our architects, two of our architects were there, and they came in just, just shy of third place on Scrabble Rama. It was a very successful event for the Reading is Fun group. I guess I don't need to shout so much now. The Reading is Fun mentoring group, and so they had a very successful, successful morning playing Scrabble. There are some amazing words that get created in that game. I also attended the Kids Arts Festival. I believe that's mostly for our children, and it was down at City Hall. There are so many wonderful groups that participate in the Kids Arts Festival, and lots of young children from our community participating in that. It's been going, I believe it's about twenty-five years now, maybe twenty-six. So that's always worth happening, worth attending, and it's the first Saturday in June usually. I also went on Saturday night to the student-written plays, and those plays were emotional. They were humorous in some places. They were very touching as young people talked about leaving school and leaving behind freshmen and sophomores and juniors and as they graduate this year. And of course, every year that, that happens. So they were well-done, and it was well-attended. The last thing I wanted to mention was the Festival of Young Arts that I attended at SPAC on Sa, on Sunday afternoon. Our Schenectady High School, I don't know if they call themselves serenaders, but they're, they're the choir, many of whom were the people who had acted the night before in the, in the production. So they did quite a medley from Les Mis on Sunday afternoon. That Festival of Young Arts that SPAC sponsors for virtually all the schools in the Northeast features performing arts, music, art, literary art, and dancing. And you can't get to everything, but I was able to catch our, our senior high students in the, in the choir that day. Coming up this week, I know Mount Ple, not Mount Pleasant, Pleasant Valley has a spring concert on Friday, and I believe Oneida has something also on Friday afternoon coming up. So stay tuned. This is a busy time of year. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy.
I have no comment tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. And Board Member Jamaica?
Vivian's next.
Or Vivian, Board Member Vivian?
No comment. Hey, y'all. So, so many things, so little time. Girls' Day Out and Boys' Day Out happened. It feels like it was just last week. It was just, right, it just happened. Myself and several other people were at Girls' Day Out. Every year that I've had an opportunity to present, the students are amazing and awesome and a whole bunch of other A-words that are good, positive A-words. That was horrible. But it really was exciting, and there are so many people that are involved in Girls' Day Out, but I can't help but talk about Ebony Belmar and the way that she coordinates and wrangles us all and they make sure that we have the information, we know where we're going, what we're doing, and looks for every opportunity to invite new people to the table to share with our students. It's amazing. It is indeed Pride Month, and on Saturday, there was the Kids Art Fest, but there also was Schenectady Pride. For the rest of this month, there's going to be pride all over the place in Albany and Saratoga. They are not just for each city. If you have an opportunity, please go. My children were with me at Schenectady Pride and had a wonderful time. Both of their pictures are in the TU, in the scene section, because of the face painting. And it just was, it's a lot of fun. And it's the recognition of, you know, being able to live as your full, authentic selves, but also it's remembering the history that Pride Month began as a civil unrest, an uprising at Stonewall, the Stonewall Bar because of police brutality and the mistreatment of the LGBTQ+ community. And so today, we look for those opportunities to make sure that everyone recognizes each individual has a right to live their lives. And so the joy that is there is beautiful to see, and it was indeed family-friendly. Hamilton Hill Arts Center is going to have its Juneteenth celebration again at Central Park, which is just another event that if you have not ever gone, you have to go. Again, there are Juneteenth celebrations happening across the capital district. Be sure to check them out. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica and Vice President Nohalani.
Okay, so very briefly, I wanted to just echo, I guess, yes, it is that time of year. It is busy. I am looking forward to the GED graduation tomorrow night at the high school, and then the broader graduation at the turf at the high school, just to differentiate. I also wanted to say thank you to Zohanna, because I know when I met you and Joyce, the first night when you all were introduced, I was just completely blown away by the both of you, and I know that you're going to go far, and I'm excited for graduation and all of the good things that are coming up. It is slowly winding down to the end of the year. We're almost there, so definitely, everyone kind of keep, keep going. We're almost there, and then we'll have a small break, and then we're back at it again. But those were all my comments.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. And I have a few. On May 28th, Superintendent Coto and I attended the Spanish-speaking parent event. It was a follow-up to the Spanish-speaking Strategic Plan Listening Tour, and it was facilitated by Senior Parent Liaison, Mr. Alex Torres. It was great discourse from our families. They provided great insight to areas of growth and suggestions. I also want to shout-out Mr. Al Tompkins, Community Engagement Specialist and Bilingual Secretary at Liberty, Ms. Diana Rodriguez, for making the event inviting and successful. And lastly, I do want to also shout-out Griselda Maserego, Parent Liaison at Faller, Zaller, for attending and engaging with our families. Okay, yeah. As Board Member Jamaica had mentioned, I also attended the Girls' Day Out and Board Member Kathy as well. And former Board Member Prinsilla was also in attendance amongst many other fabulous women from the community. There were over twenty workshops ranging from Cry Proudly, Envision Your Success, Social Media Fun, We're Dangerous, Who Is Your Crew, which was facilitated by Board Member Jamaica. And I facilitated Your Voice, Your Knowledge, We Care Speak Out session with our very own student reps on the panel, Zohanna, Joyce, and several key club students from the high school, Maha, Desiree, and Julia. And I am going to use this word because it really exemplifies how they were. It was, it was amazing. I've been doing the panel for about fifteen years, and I think this was one of the best. The panelists, Zohanna, Joyce, and the others, they were so thoughtful with their responses. And there were some, there was one in particular that was very touching. And the girl poured her heart, her heart out, and Joyce and Zohanna stayed after to talk with that, that girl. But it was, they did such, I mean, and I, they, I'm very proud of you all, because you did such a great job. It was, it was amazing, and the key club students were very, very good as well. But I also want to mention several other people, because yes, as Board Member Jamaica said, Ms. Belmar does it all. She was, she's amazing, and she's a social worker here at Mount Pleasant Middle School. But I also want to mention Community Manager, Member Laura Fontaine. She is the key person behind Girls' Day Out and Boys' Day Out. Leah Hall, our Schenectady New York Gear Coordinator. She was very instrumental. Kiana Miller, who's actually on our tenure list, I believe. She's, she's a social worker at Central Park. Lexi Klein, school counselor at Oneida. Mary Ann Rendon, Sarah Austin, and Darcy Jacobs from Mount Pleasant Middle School, who are all instrumental in this work. And I thank again all the leaders. We had fun. Dr. Chisholm was there too, and others, and we were double dutching. That was a lot of fun. So I'll, I have more, but I'll pause there. So thank you very much. Thank you. Our first order of business is the tenure resolution. I'll accept the motion to approve the resolution to appoint certain employee tenure. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Any discussion, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? As we gather here to celebrate the invaluable contributions of our tenured educators, it is fitting to recognize the guiding force behind the scenes who ensures our staff receives the support, resources, and professional development they need to thrive. Please join me in welcoming Shannon Tahoe, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Professional Learning. In her role, Shannon and her team embody a profound commitment to the growth and development of our educators, recognizing that investing in their professional journey is tantamount to enriching the educational experience of every student under our care. Tonight, Shannon will lead us in celebrating the accomplishments and dedication of our tenured educators. Welcome again. You're welcome.
This is a very exciting day for some of our folks. Getting tenure in our district is a very big deal. This is years and years of work from some of our very talented teachers in our district and administrators. And so we're proud to announce a little, have a little celebration right after this to celebrate our tenured candidates. And I just want to say one thing to you all. We are so happy to have you here at Schenectady. If you ever need anything, the Office of Human Resources is always here to support you. And I also want to let you know that we want to welcome you home, because tenure decision is a two-way road, and this is us saying we want you in our district, and you saying, I want to stay here in Schenectady. So we are so proud to have you all here tonight. And I just need my glasses to basically announce this. Hold on one second. Oh, they're on my head. Here we go. So we have Amanda Best, Special Education. Jennifer, is she here tonight? If you're here, if you could stand up just so the board can see your faces, that would be great. be great. So we have Amanda Best, Special Education. Jennifer Brandt, Elementary. Mary Breslin, Social Work. Lori Cannon, Teaching Assistant. We have Leanne Dolly, Social Work. Kelly Deskowitz, Reading. Victoria DeVito, Music. Jill Gandolfo, Social Work. Emmy Houghton, Speech. Samantha Kishon, School Counselor. There she is back there. Carrie Lorenzo, Elementary. Evan Liberty, ESL. Shereen Milkins, Elementary. Kiana Miller, Social Work. Emily Montalise, Elementary. Allison Nielsen, ESL. Ogurin Odegrabi, Art. Patricia Corenta, Elementary. Ryan Chute, English. Megan Zelpeck, School Library. Kelsey Vorus, Elementary. Jessica Woodward, Elementary. Conti Yakabella, Music. Amy Stroms, English. Latia Johnson, Social Worker. And Mikey Dady, Special Education. And we also have with us Dennis Green, has also received tenure this year, he's, oh, there he is up there. Yes. Carmela Parente, Director of Teaching and Learning, and she's here as well. And Rebecca Gleason. And so this is exciting for us, so that's very exciting, as we have over, was there one more, Leah? Oh, Kristen Monrath, too, who is with us back there. Kristen Monrath. So we have, this is an exciting time for us to have all of you here tonight, and we thank you for coming, and we want to have a little celebration out in the corridor with you, with some cupcakes and some water out there. Thank you for coming to Schenectady, and welcome home.
We're suspending, pausing. Right? We're pausing? Yes.
So we're going to all start to work our way out. Ms. Tahoe, are we out in the main lobby there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Board President Rivera. Tonight, we have two policies that the Policy Committee had discussed at our most recent meeting, excuse me, Policy 5620 and Policy 6440. The first is surrounding inventories. This is essentially in red, you can see it, but it's information regarding the inventory of our textbooks, consumables, things of that nature. So we do have a reference to Policy 8340 on textbooks, trade books, and workbooks, and the Schenectady City School District Textbook Admin Guideline and District Procedure Manual. So we do have some new items that have come into play, and I wanted to open it up to see if anyone had any questions, concerns, or thoughts on this very first policy.
I just want to thank the Policy Committee, because we did have someone, I believe he was from the New York State Education Department, to do an audit on our textbooks and our inventory, so I appreciate the work that all of you, and I know Dr. Chisholm was also in the meeting, so thank you so much for your diligence and making sure that we have a policy.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So hearing no questions, we'll move, excuse me, to Policy 6440 on negotiations. This was a policy that was already in place, there are just a couple of very minor changes in red, however, we did add the Schenectady City School District School Safety Officers Unit under the legal status for negotiations. So if there are any questions on that, I will open it up to you all now.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. We will now transition to Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Chisholm, who will provide some insight about two resolutions not included in the consent agenda item, that is Unboard Ed Learning and Crescendo Education Group. Welcome, Dr. Chisholm.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Cotto, Board President Rivera.
like, I'm just 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 like, I'm just[942.89]
Followed by our strategic planning pillars. And a lot of the work you'll hear tonight falls within the pillar of student and graduate success. We're going to start with suspension. And so this first slide shows you an overall district-wide suspension rate from last September 1st through April 18th, which was the end of quarter three, to the same time period this year. September 1st through the end of the quarter three this year. And so this is cumulative. I know I presented a lot of information around suspension to you all in the earlier part of the year, so some of those things we've already talked about, but this is kind of a continuation on where we are now as we continue to look at that data. And as you can see, we're currently slightly lower than we were last year at this time. This slide represents the suspension rate for the same period of time by level. These are the elementary levels. As you can see, several buildings are experiencing a lower suspension rate this year, including Hamilton, Kane, Lincoln, Woodlawn, and Zaller. We see some slight increases at Howe, MLK, PV, and Yates. And we're continuing to work with Paige and Van Corleere on behavioral intervention strategies and resorted practices. I know we talked about both of those schools in January, and I will say that it's cumulative, so it's not going to go backwards from where it was, but they did reduce some in quarter three, so they are getting better. And just to explain the chart, it's kind of hard to see on the screen with the projector, but the bottom is the percentage rate, and then the numbers that are at the tops of the bars represent the unique number of students. Same period of time. Moving on to the middle schools, same metrics. We see here Central Park is showing a reduction of 4.6% in overall suspension rate for that same time period, which is great. Oneida is showing a slight decrease and Mount Pleasant a slight increase. So we continue to work with those buildings as well. And looking at the high school level, as you can see, SCLA had a significant reduction. I think we talked about that also in January. And keeping in mind that we moved the ninth and 10th graders over to the main campus. So there are about 100 students in 10 through 12 who moved over to the main campus, plus all the freshmen. So considering that, there is an increase at the high school, but you know, when you look at the comparison between the amount that SCLA has gone down and the amount the high school's gone up, it is remarkable. And then we had Washington Irving had a decrease. However, their numbers are very small. So sometimes that is hard to really tell. You can see the number of students at the very top. In one of the bars, it's only three students. Early College High School continues to have no suspensions, and Big Pick did have less than 10 this year so far. This will give you a sense of where we are with regard to our district comprehensive improvement plan goals around suspension. We aimed to reduce by 5% last year, and we're able to only make about a 1.7% reduction. We committed again this year to another reduction of 5%. And while we are slightly lower than we were last year, we still have fourth quarter to go. So it's not looking like we're going to make the 5% again this year, but we hope to have a strong quarter four and be able to still remain lower than we were last year. We also continue to show over 2.0 for relative risk for black students, and we did reduce some since my last presentation for students with disabilities. We've been working a lot with buildings around some of that DSEP process as well. Shifting now into the Code of Character. I would like to first start by thanking the Code of Character Committee. These are the members this year who've been meeting regularly since January to inform the draft of the 24-25 Code of Character that you will see before you tonight. And really, this committee has worked very diligently this year to collect and review stakeholder feedback. We met numerous times since January to review data and discuss the nuances of the Code of Character, where edits could be made to better inform practice and outcome for students. Some of the committee even took a trip down to Lehman College in January to view a documentary by Dr. Karen Baptiste called Preschool to Prison. We participated in activities and discussions with other districts and professionals around that topic. And all of our work and sometimes difficult conversations informed the draft of the Code of Character that you have in front of you today. We will be asking the board to open the official 30-day public comment period starting tomorrow, which would run through July 5th. And then if no major changes are needed, we would ask the board to adopt this in early July. And so really, our so what now whats around suspension is to continue focusing our attention on buildings with high suspensions for students with disabilities, making sure we're really capturing the essence of those procedural pieces that need to happen through CSE and through our DSEP process, making sure we're figuring out the relationship between disability and behavior, and making sure we're supporting students the way that they need to be with their behavior planning. I think the other piece that's really going to be a big shift for next year is Mr. Omeley and I met with the secondary principals recently to talk about the long-term suspension program that we shifted this year, and we created programs within the secondary buildings. And any student that was serving a 20-day or less suspension for long-term was serving it within the school building as opposed to across town at Washington Irving. We also, you probably remember, shifted kind of what those guidelines look like. So we kind of joke like 20 days is the new 10 weeks. We really have thought about, you know, what are those consequence lengths of time? And what do they aim to do, and what kind of interventions need to be in place? And we've all agreed that this program shift has really been helpful. Kids also have been talking at their kind of return back to school that it's been really helpful to stay close to their building, being able to stay close with their teachers, keeping up on work, making sure they're getting therapeutic support. So we're looking to expand that next year and have most of the long-term suspension programs served within the buildings, with the exception of a few that may need to serve off-campus if there are, you know, significant safety issues and things like that. But for most of them, we are trying to shift in the building. Administrators are really in support of that because they've seen the positive outcomes that it's had for kids this year. Obviously, our continued review of data and Code of Character edits by the committee. We also are revamping the roles and responsibilities of our school psychologists this coming year. We've been working with them around sort of separating the roles so that we'll have building-based school psychologists and CSE chairpersons. And splitting some of those roles and responsibilities so that we can make some improvements around our system of MTSS. This is a real need for us because our school psychologists do play an integral role in that. And come annual review season, they're really wrapped up in CSE meetings and have a hard time getting to the table for those school-based support team meetings. So we're working with the Office of Teaching and Learning, Erica McFarland, Dr. DeVries, and really trying to improve that system of MTSS and calibrate it across all of our buildings this coming year, with this being a strategy to help make that happen. We're also going to be doing some professional development around that with, starting with our psychologists in June, and then with the school administrators at their retreat in July, and then with teachers in the fall. So I'm hoping that this shift will help us from a more systems level, and we'll be able to make sure there's no kids falling through the cracks and that kids are able to have a really well-developed support plan and that it's progress monitored and that there's less crisis and more prevention in tier one. And then lastly, you know, we talk about our second step, SCL curriculum. We have SCL second step between, for grades level pre-K through eight at this point. And so we're just really working to implement that fidelity and checking some of the usage reports. There's a couple of areas where we just got to tighten that up a little bit, but making sure that everybody realizes those are non-negotiables. Those are pieces that if we need to work on providing additional training, that we can do that. But monitoring that, that is also a goal for this coming year. And I am going to turn it over now to Dr. DeVries, who's going to walk you through some of our attendance data.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So to start, I always want to preface attendance with Schenectady is not immune to the national crisis around attendance. However, when looking at our data tonight, we are seeing attendance rates that are better than last year. We are still seeing, continuing to see concerns around chronic absenteeism, and you will see that in the slides we have moving forward. Okay, for this first slide, we are going to start looking at daily attendance rates for elementary. So as shown in the graph here, it is quarter two of this year is compared to quarter three of this year. As you can see, Paige and Zaller have had the highest attendance rates of 87% in the comparison, with Hamilton and Howe showing the greatest increases between the quarters. As we always do, we go back and get input. And when discussing the approaches with the buildings about how they've been improving that attendance from quarter two to quarter three, they've really been highlighting their positive behavior intervention and support models, so that PBIS. Buildings are not only celebrating students with 100% attendance, but also those who have made improvements in attendance. And additionally, they've spoken about the prioritization they have of the preventative work they're doing with attendance, where they may really have a key focus in all communications with families, regardless of the student's status about attendance. So in every conversation they have, there's a component of attendance in a preventative manner. So it happens at the family and student individual level, all the way to the school-wide event level. So as you can see, there are still growth opportunities. We recognize the need to kind of expand those whole-school response supports that we're finding success in some of our other elementary schools. An example would be Hamilton's Schenectady City School District. We've hashtagged it "One Trusted Adult." It's a model, it's a responsive model where we, they have designated an adult, and it could be anyone, who maintains daily or weekly contact with students and their families, who are at a less than 80% daily attendance rate. And they provide emotional support, relationship connectivity. They remove barriers, connect them to the outside external resources. So we've really seen a lot of success with that, and we're hoping to expand some of that. Maybe trademark it as our own. Next slide. All right, all middle schools, okay. As you can see on this slide, all middle schools saw an increase in overall student attendance from that quarter-two comparison to quarter-three for this year. Did it move? I'm sorry, I can't even see. Attendance rates at all high schools have remained relatively stable from quarter-two to quarter-three. Notably, did it? Yeah, it did, okay. Big picture increased significantly from quarter-two to quarter-three, and they've been doing focused interventions, including daily communications with families about student attendance. And they're also leveraging their advisory period, their model, which again is a relationship trusted adult model, where they're having daily conversations not only with individual students, but in small groups and in their classrooms about attendance. And those improvements were really driven by weekly data meetings that the building was having, that where they would consider kind of the overall cohort data down into that individual student attendance. There was a 4% decline in attendance at Washington Irving Educational Center. However, given the small number of students at this school, even one student's daily absence can significantly impact the overall attendance percentage of that building. In addition, this building holds programs for some of our most vulnerable learners, which highlights an important growth opportunity. Where to address this, we really will continue to implement, but with more frequency, family communications on that individual level, and continue to utilize data meetings to closely monitor and support those individuals and those intervention plans. Moving on to chronic absenteeism. I'd like to give the reminder that chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% of school days within one academic school year for any reason. So it includes excused absences and unexcused absences. So students considered chronically absent, on average, have missed at least two days of school per month by this time of year. So keep in mind, when you review this data up here, there is no way for them, if they've missed more than 18 at this point, to remove them from being chronically absent in the percentage. So doesn't matter how much they improve for quarter four, they're going to still be captured in this data. The data on this slide shows you a comparison of our chronic absenteeism rate from September 1st of 2022 to quarter-three of 2023, last school year, to this year of 23, 24 of quarter-one through quarter-three. And as you can see, there is a decline in chronic absenteeism moving across those grades from one to eight. So compared to last year, we're doing better. In particular, you'll note the huge percentage of reduction for grades six and seven. So while there's much to be done there, and we still have to kind of review the overall trends, we're moving in a positive direction. Of note, we haven't really reviewed it. We made a very intentional move with the attendance specialists this year, given the data for the middle schools last year, where every middle school was given one individual attendance person that only worked with that team. And so we have seen some big moves in the numbers in grade six and seven for those buildings. Continuing on into grades nine through 12, when we look at the chronic absenteeism rates from last year to this year for those three quarters, we see a significant reduction in that senior year in grade 12. In grade 11, there is a slight increase. And in ninth and 10th grade, we see a greater increase in the chronic absenteeism rate. However, there is a growth opportunity in the implementation of new enrollment codes that have been created by the New York State Education Department, NICID. These codes, enrollment codes, are designed to track students who are accruing absences, but who might have moved or begun at another school, but we don't know yet. We haven't been given notice, we're still tracking them down, all while they're inaccurately accruing absences for us. These codes will better enable us to maintain accurate records and to follow up effectively, ensuring that no student falls through a crack due to unforeseen circumstances or relocation. So by using new enrollment codes, we can identify instances where we have inaccurate chronic absenteeism because the students are still on our enrollment list, but they possibly shouldn't be. I'd like to give an example around this because it sounds a little convoluted. We're moving into summer break. August may come along and you may have a family who has a fourth grader. And the family may go out of the country. And so come September, the families move to another country, and people in the community know, and they wish them well. But maybe we don't know here at the school. And they're on our enrollment list in September, and we're looking for them. And we don't know where they are, they're a compulsory age student. And we don't have documentation of where they went. These new enrollment codes will allow us to move into this new code where we would have been previously had them enrolled in the building, marking them as absent. And so the new NICID process allows us to do that, and it creates us a real good system of accountability where we remain aware that the students are not receiving education from us. We have a responsibility to track them down, locate them, confirm they're being educated. But we're not inaccurately complicating the chronic absenteeism data. So that is a new piece. And now I'm going to have Marsha Ranieri, our Assistant Director of Attendance Engagement, do the so what now wha.
Thank you. So thanks, Dr. DeVries. As we work to foster relationships between students and our schools and families, we've established meeting schedules at all of our buildings. So all of our elementary buildings have teams for attendance, a counselor, a social worker, some of the great attendance specialists that you see here tonight, attendance paras, administrators, and sometimes school psychologists. So we're working as a team to highlight students that need structured and direct interventions over the summer so we can set up families for success at the start of the new school year. We work with families, our nurse manager, and the rest of our team to see that students have the necessary vaccinations in order to be able to start school right from the beginning of the year. Our nurse manager, Nora Capron, has been working diligently with our community partners, Schenectady County Public Health, Hometown Health, and Ellis Medicine to develop a comprehensive plan for tackling this issue as we expect to see continued dramatic decreases in students being excluded due to immunizations this coming year. Something exciting is that we're relaunching our Project Be Here campaign to work with the school community to reengage students in school. Our attendance team is ordering t-shirts, just like the one I have on today, with our hashtag logo and making us stand out in our schools and when we're out and about in our communities that we work in. So as you can see, we have three attendance specialists with us here tonight, and they're wearing the attendance team shirts that we're going to show this week. The great thing that I'm about to share with you is a glimpse at a success story that's related to attendance for a few of our students. There it is.
Hi, I'm Marsha Ranieri. I'm the Assistant Director here of Attendance Engagement. And this year, we spent a lot of time working on getting our students back to school and decreasing our chronic absenteeism rate through really purposeful interventions and working with families to have direct relationships with them to get their students to return to school.
My attendance used to be bad. Like, I wouldn't come to school if I wasn't feeling like it. But she would push us and like do like these challenges for attendance that made us like show up and made you want to come to school more.
One thing I saw as an Attendance Engagement specialist is the amount of families, once they have the support, for our attendants specialists or anyone in the district, they are more likely to send you the text messages or the make the phone calls necessarily to let people know that their children won't be in attendance.
Then setting up the chat with my grandsons at home. True.
To me, she is a blessing, and I'm so glad that I had somebody that I can actually reach her to all the time. You know, and whenever I call her, she is available, and she always, always finds out the information that I need.
Just walking the halls and having someone to talk to and, you know, knowing that there's someone there to lighten up the mood all the time. It makes me want to come to school more often, and it makes me want to do my work more.
She always made sure I stayed on top of my grades, on top of my attendance, just showed nothing but love, support, and that's really what I needed my last year.
It's fun to be at school too. When we never be absent, we always get the MBA.
Since I started at Kane, I have seen a decrease in chronic absenteeism for the school overall. There are specific students that have had phenomenal improvements where that'd be a 50% increase in their attendance from last year to this year.
This is absolutely the best system, scanning our children accurately. Teachers are getting that accurate time of what time they came in party or absent or whatever. So everything is working here.
My mom takes me to school every single day. And why it's important to come to school is because you can learn.
I love about school because we can play and you can get really, really smart.
All right, we will take any questions that you have.
Hi, I'm Marsha Ranieri.
Board member Kathy. Yeah, board member Kathy, you have any question?
Yes. I just was wondering with regard to the Code of Conduct, Character, whatever, whether the committee had discussions about cell phones in as much as there may yet be legislation between now and the end of June on cellphone use in schools?
We did a little, but a lot of the feedback we got, if it was around cellphone use, we took a look back at the policy, and there were things that were sound in policy, but it was more practice that people would, the complaints or the suggestions that were being made were more about practice and consistent implementation rather than policy. So the policies you see in this Code of Character, we added the new athletic policy, we added the Chromebook policy, and we didn't change any of the policies. So the cellphone policy, if that were to get done by a different committee, we would insert it in here, but we did not talk about like revamping the cellphone policy.
Okay, so if there's additional legislation between now and June, end of June, we may have to look at.
Yeah, we may have to pull a committee together,
Look at that again.
Bring it to policy committee, and then we would insert an addendum.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Vivian.
Hi. Comment and then a question. So in regards to our attendance specialists, our team, first of all, I have a comment. I was very touched by hearing the work that you're doing for our children in the district. The video, watching our children talk about the impact that you are having on them, the positive impact. I'm not even trying to be dramatic, I genuinely, I'm close to tears right now because it's just so moving. I wanted to say thank you and give you a huge shout-out for the work that you are doing. It's very clear that, definitely, this takes creativity, engagement, compassion, and not only are you having a short-term positive impact on our children, but the long-term positive impact, I don't know if we can accurately quantify it at this juncture. But those are far-reaching positive impacts that you're having on our kids and their families on many different levels. So thank you for the work that you are doing. And then my question. In regards to the behaviors, I understand that we are looking into finding the correlation between students with disabilities and their behaviors. On the flip side of that, are we looking at the very real connection between behaviors and students who are either significantly behind academically or students who may feel that they are not being challenged enough in the classroom? Because there's definitely a connection there. And unfortunately, there are students who I fear may be, just because of the way that the system is set up in general, they may be falling in the cracks because there's not a 504 plan or an IEP to specifically address individual needs.
Yeah, I think the work that I spoke to around the revamping of sort of that MTSS process and freeing up the people that need to help lead that is going to be really critical for that because there, you know, we spent some time today at the principal's meeting talking about the if then, if this, then that, and all of the different things that really we have in terms of resources and plans that can be developed and the barriers that are affecting people collaborating on those kinds of things. And so that is a real area that we've got to improve upon next year because I think we've got lots of things we can do. And those data meetings that you're talking about to look at, what is the root cause? Is it a tier-one issue? How many things are coming out of a particular room where we need to work on that particular classroom strategies versus is there a student who needs something different in terms of support? That all starts with us creating the district-wide system around MTSS, similar to special education, how you kind of move in and out of different spaces and services based on kind of where you are and what's been tried and not working. We should be doing that with all students.
Thank you. And then just my follow-up question, and then I'm done, I promise. Will that also include looking at empowering teachers to be able to provide a more, what's the word I'm looking for? Customized curriculum for their students, again, without necessarily needing an IEP or 504. So example, if there is a student who feels that they maybe need something a little more challenging or a student who may be a little bit further behind, would we be looking into empowering teachers to provide them more customized support academically within the classroom as far as the curriculum is concerned?
Yeah, I think our special education teachers have a lot of expertise around scaffolding and differentiation. And one of the goals we also have is for increasing our opportunities for professional development so that all teachers can access those kinds of things. So being able to encourage our special ed teachers to actually facilitate professional development around things like differentiation and scaffolding would be definitely a way we could improve that.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? Board member Jamaica?
Press the button. Chronically absent includes excused and unexcused.
Correct.
I just had to hear you say it again because there are some parents who share about, you know, they have children with chronic illness. And so that's excused, but still, okay. Which leads me to kind of something that's similar, the education of parents. On all kinds of levels, and specifically students with disabilities, and the suspension process. Because it is my understanding that if the behavior is directly related to the disability, it's a whole different process to suspend that student. Parents don't know that. What are we doing to make sure parents are aware of the processes that are supposed to happen, right? Like, while you're working with staff to make sure that things are being followed, how are we educating parents and guardians so that they are aware upfront? Like, hey, your child has an IEP. If there's ever a question about suspension, this is the process that's supposed to happen. So that they can be empowered to make sure, hey, we're not just suspending Jimmy because he threw a chair if blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So how are we going to?
I think this year we've done some intentional things around partnering with parents, including the creation of the SEPTO, Special Education PTO. We've been getting more and more.
I'm sorry, there's a what?
There's a SEPTO, it's a Special Education PTO. And there's been more and more parents joining that and coming and being, um, participating in those sessions and also giving ideas for other topics they'd like to see there.
How can parents find out where the Special Education PTO is and how to be involved as a parent of a special education child? I would love to.
Yep, I know we've done some blast out communication style, sent home some letters, but also if in doubt, go to our website. If you go to our school district website, to the, um, departments and then go to the Office of Student Support Services. We've got a lot of, um, items on there around special education and actually, board member Vivian worked with us on some suggestions even around a parent resource page. So there's been some improvement around the, um, resources on that page for parents, especially around special education, so thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, um, last thing I think is, um, if there's gonna be enrollment codes to help us be more accurate, are there separate codes for absenteeism that is excused? Who you got to talk to? Yes, I did say it like that, like, or who, who, who we got to talk to? Where, where is the gap?
Creator of the SERGE manual?
To, to be able to be reflective about, because I think it does matter. If, if a child has been sick for two weeks, and I've been in this situation. My son, who's now graduated, he was out sick for three months in, um, elementary school sick. That would be considered chronically absent, but it's not a clear reflection of why. And I, I think that matters, so whatever it is that could possibly happen, if there's a role that we can play to ensure that that reflection is there, which I'm sure lots of schools would love, um, you know, for, for sure, let us, let us know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Jamaica, board member Amanda?
Continuing what Jamaica was talking about with the, the excused versus unexcused. So there's currently, you guys don't, aren't able to track that now, who's excused and who's not excused?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can tell who's excused and who's unexcused, but when you count the chronic absenteeism rate for the state, it's all-inclusive.
Okay, is it possible for us, do you have those like, not like readily available right now, but could you send those to us too? Because it does, even though I know that statewide, you know, maybe they don't, they, you know, put everything into one bucket. But I, I mean, I personally would like to see the difference between the legitimately excused absences and those who maybe just need a little bit of help and education about the importance of coming to school.
Sure, I'm sure we can work with the, um, Office of District Initiatives Planning and Accountability, DIPPA, to, to get some reports for you.
But within that number, there's also going to be like a gap because there may be an excused absence that just wasn't reported, right? Because while the attendance specialists are working with families, A, like in the video said, they'll give me a call now, let me know what's going on. We don't have that for all of our parents, that they could be absent for a legitimate reason. So even within the numbers that we have, there could be excused absences that aren't reported as excused because they weren't.
Yeah, the date of the poll, it could be unexcused and then turning into an, an excused a few days later, depending on as notes are being turned in and things like that.
Right, so when I look at it, I'll keep that in mind that it's.
Okay. Yeah, we can get you something.
Maybe some. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, um, just in general with the attendance specialists. I'm just wondering, how are the parents receiving the, the role and the interaction? I'm just curious in general, how has it been received?
Anybody want to speak to that? I see her hand going up.
We can speak with them, we'll pretty much provide them with anything that they need if we can get it for them. Our team goes above and beyond, we go to grocery stores for families. We get the special education paperwork that they need and our, our team is pretty good, I hate to say. We, we really do try our best to help out the families and they all have different needs. So we all have different specialties within the group, but we try to just get it as quick as we can, whatever they need.
Yeah, I tend to, um, connect with the parents, um, on a different level, like a mental health level. Um, but, um, once I start talking to the parents, I find that sometimes they'll come at me aggressive, like my child is out sick or my child, um, doesn't want to come to school, my child is giving me a hard time. Whatever it is, I make sure I'm still comforting the parent to say, oh no, that's fine, but how can I support you? So it's as simple as I moved to a new location and my child needs a ride. I might not get to this building until 8:45. I'm not not working, I'm just picking up this child because the family has moved, there's no transportation. So I don't pick up multiple kids if it's, it's one kid at a time in my car and I might have to go 15 minutes later to pick up another child, but I'm getting them babies to school because they don't know any better, the families won't get them to school if I don't come pick them up. So although I, sometimes I, I'm in the meantime with a point of, with not appointments, but meetings and things, but I say I'm going to be a couple of minutes late, I have to pick up this student. And the families love it, they thank me, you know, I'm safe, I put my recording, my phone is probably overwhelmed with data stuff, but I always put my phone on video record, set it up in my car while I'm driving, so just in case an accusation's made. I have conversation with the babies, they're all babies to me, but, um, especially the little kindergartners. I have my car seat in the car, strap them up, get them, we're off and, we're off and running. So I feel like, um, connecting with the families, like I said on my, um, my little presentation, um, again, my phone is filled because they're texting me every single day to let me know my child's gonna be absent. And I established that in the beginning when I seen three or four days absent. I'm like, I can tell this family's gonna be a issue or concern, but I just stay connected. And I can honestly say, being in Mount Pleasant as an attendance specialist for three years now, I have gained relationships with the sixth grade students and I've watched them grow and we have constant conversations around attendance. So I can appreciate it.
So I'm the newbie of the bunch, but in my four months of being in this position, I would definitely piggyback and say a lot of it is just an engagement and relationship and just building the trust, um, and also just, you know, keeping constant and steady communication. Me, myself, there's specific families that I just do a good morning checking in so that they know, hey, you know, I'm holding you accountable to getting your child to school. And with several of those specific families, like I stated in the, um, video as well, looking at their attendance from last year to this year, um, there has been a 50% increase, believe it or not, so. And this morning I saw both of the siblings coming in and they looked happy and ready to come to school and just, you know, seeing that change and that change of, um, attitude definitely is rewarding, so, yeah.
And I have a follow-up question. So I'm wondering, have, and I know it varies from school to school, but have you seen, have you heard or have you, do you, do you see a trend in the reasons why some of our students are not coming? Okay, see, can you speak on that a little bit? What are some of the reasons?
A lot of the reasons are, again, mental health. A, a lot of the reasons, and I'm gonna just put a lot because it's a lot, a lot of the reasons are homelessness. I find, um, a lot of our students are just growing different. Society is so different than it was how many moons ago. Um, so yeah, kids are just trying to adjust, they're trying to copycat, the peer pressure is there. So they're gonna either come to school to be with their friends and mimic their friends' behavior. I don't see many coming to school to want to learn, it's more to play around, not wear shoes in the hallway, run through the hallways, it's a lot, um. But yeah, that, I would say homelessness, mental health, and just the lack of parenting.
I just want to mention that one of the factors that I did, that I have seen is transportation, where their family is, you know, in that less than a mile radius for elementary school, because I'm at an elementary school, and, you know, the walk is, you know, say whatever weather it is, whether it's too warm outside or too cold outside, it's like, you know, will you take your five, six, seven-year-old outside in the cold or the rain or the heat? So I know that's, that's a common factor as well.
I'm the super honest one out of the bunch, I mean, they're all honest, but it's connections. They do not have a connection with a lot of the people within the buildings. Um, and they will speak with us about it and confident sometimes, um, but a lot of it does have to do with the connections, the IEPs, 504s, the, the mislabeling of the different things that are going on with them as far as behaviors. The suspensions, once they get suspended, it's like they come back in the building and they don't know what's going on, where to start, who to go to. But I would say connections and engagement within the building.
Thank you so much, I appreciate all of you and your work that you're doing because I know it's hard work and it can get frustrating probably as well, so thank you very much and thank you for your honesty, we like that. That's good.
Just to mention too, there's 10 of them, you know, that all couldn't make it here tonight, but there are 10 of them out there doing this work. And also, um, you appointed Tanya tonight to become our new licensed mental health counselor as she finished her certification, so congratulations.
Board member Jamaica?
Mic check. Thank you for meeting them where they're at and making sure they feel no judgment, just love and care and concern because our families need it so much. And y'all are on the ground, on the front lines, I know what that means. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, board member Jamaica, and board member Vivian?
So I swear I was originally done and then I heard what all of these wonderful women were saying, so now I have a follow-up question. And I don't know if this is something that you would be able to answer now or if you needed to answer it later through an email, but listening to the fact that we are using our personal vehicles to pick up our babies to bring them to school, I have questions, HR brain is working here. Um, so are we as a district providing additional insurance for, for their protection for their vehicles? Are we providing with fuel reimbursement? Um, are we providing them with our own audio and video recording equipment similar to what would be on a bus or an Uber driver so they are not utilizing their own personal cell phones? These are just some of the things that, if, this is going to be an expectation, clearly it's working. So I see, I personally don't see a need to alter what we're already doing, it's working. But if we're gonna have an expectation, I also firmly believe in, in providing support that equally matches the expectation, so that's why I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I mean, we have policies around driving kids around and also, um, there should be two people in the vehicle and also, um, they do get mileage, so it's something we have to probably debrief about a little bit, but there is, um, there is, they're covered by insurance as well if something happens. And they all have cell phones, in case they get into a pickle.
And I just have one, I wonder from several slides ago around discipline. My question, because I know we have our, um, our discipline and our, or the suspension in the schools now, as you mentioned as well. I'm wondering, because I've heard, depending on the school, different variations, but are we consistently providing, do you know, um, consistently providing the materials or the homework to our students in those, in the long, in the suspension rooms? You know, so are they getting the work?
For the long-term suspension programs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've actually improved a lot over the year. I know in the beginning it was kind of challenging to figure out how to do the push-in, but they've, the, the school administrators have really figured out a system. That was part of our debrief recently around how that's going, so our teachers can be assigned like.
Students being suspended for not going to class. I hear about it, it seems like an oxymoron. If the kid's not going to class, you suspended him, you gave him, him or her, they, you gave them what they wanted. And the reason I thought about it, because when you're asking about homework, if a kid who already isn't going to class is missing work, they're already behind, then they're suspended, even if it's for two days, they're further behind. Even if a kid is, you know, where they're supposed to be with their work and they're only suspended for two days, it creates them being behind, because I feel as if, in, in my experience, there is a gap. Long-term suspensions, there's a plan, right? Oh, long-term suspension, we gotta make sure this works, ba, 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 ba. Short-term suspension, it really feels like you weren't here for two days figuring it out. There's not the same level of a committed reentry plan unless it's an excessive suspension. And so if you hadn't mentioned homework, I probably would have forgotten.
Yeah, I, I know I sent the board ahead of time, like the actual changes to this document this year. I would definitely take a look at that because those are some of the conversations the committee had. And we did move some codes around, one in particular to address that piece around that, that, um, secular, that cycle that happens of avoidance, um, as well as some language changing in here around reentry meetings. So I think you'll find what you're looking for.
Thank you so much for all the information that you shared with us, it was very helpful, very informational. And thank you for attending our board meeting today, we appreciate you, thank you for the work that you're doing and you will continue to do.
Thanks for having us.
Have a good evening.
We won't be mad if you get up and leave.
Yeah, no, that's all right, that's all right. Okay, so now, board members, I'll accept a motion to approve the Code of Character Conduct and Support Resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, board member Amanda, second. Thank you, Vice President Nohalani, any discussion, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to accept the Code of Character Conduct and Support Resolution carries. At this time, um, student board members, Johanna and Joyce, you are excused from the rest of the board meeting. Thank you again for being with us.
We appreciate you, Johanna.
And have a good night, Joyce.
Have a good night.
Joyce will be joining us on June 26th at the table. We'll wait about one minute until everyone leaves the auditorium. Oh, not everyone, those that are walking towards.
Picture, quick picture with Johanna.
We all look like Melton Ice.
Listen, I don't know, listen, I remembered my water, y'all.
I did too.
Shoot, I got my. Joyce! Come on back! But trust me, yes, Rumelins is a movie. Free light, free light, free light! That's what that just was. Joyce is coming into the hot seat. Next time. Yep, yep. Have a good night. Have a good trip. Well, next time. Yeah. Official. Official, official. I'm still seeing spots.
And me too.
And our final presentation is from SEI Design Architects. Welcome, Alistair Etchison, who will be providing an update to the board. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, I will be short, snappy moving through this because I know there's a lot of slides. What I will say before we kick off is that since we last met about 10 weeks ago, we've opened three, or three separate bids for construction projects. So that's why there's a lot more information. You'll see here, as I say, we've got six sections. One of them, the overview, and then, of course, the early phase projects. We'll move in to talk a little bit about the plan for their Phase 1 of our revitalization project. And then we'll finish off with some of the other projects that don't fall under either of those categories. Let me flick forward. You've seen this slide before, of course, we're right at the start. We've, we've just awarded the, let me see if I can shine this if this works. Yeah. The purple and the cyan above it are the ones that just bid out and they came in under budget, which is great. And I'll get to that later in the, in the presentation. Currently, as you'll see outside right now, we have, where the synthetic turf is down. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see it, but we're gonna be, we're gonna be working on that and also the tennis court over this summer, including the concession building. So first up, we have, obviously the one that kicked off first is the multi-use court at the high school. Where, that's planned to be completed by the, I think it's in August, before the end of the summer. The lights have already been installed up there and they're functioning. There's gonna be work that is in, it's the same contractor for both this one and Mont Pleasant Track and Field. So work that occurs, for instance, like the asphalt and the concrete, they work on one project and they switch over to the other so they can continue to use the same crew. And this is some of the examples of what we have. The fence posts are up. The asphalt will be going down shortly, but you can see the, the trench strain that runs along, along the fence line plus the sidewalk. And this is the, the bus loop that comes around closest to the athletic wing over to Mont Pleasant. As I say, the, the field turf has been installing, the turf for the last two weeks are gonna be complete this week. All the lines are in. It's made, it's a huge change, as you can see, and really brightens up. There's an example right there. This actually, since this was taken, the logo has been installed as well. The grandstand concrete will be completed this week. I think we're gonna be putting in, the structure actually arrives for the grandstand this weekend and they're gonna start next Monday. So you're gonna start seeing the steel go up for the, the grandstand bleachers. Concession building was another one that was actually, we opened bids on the 26th of March, which is about six days after we last met. Again, we were able to award everything in the base bid plus the three ad alternates, one of which is the decorative arch truss that you can walk through, which is gonna be fantastic. And then, of course, some, some signage and branding. We've been working with a local vendor right now to do colored block for the, you'll see the blue and the white block, which will be really set off the concession building. And there's a couple of renderings of how it will look when it's all done. And here's, this is just last week when they poured the footers for the foundation walls. They've now since built up the, the rest of the frost walls. So we're gonna be, you'll see a lot of action in the next six weeks as we start to pour concrete around the foundation walls. And here's a close-up of the, some of the foundation walls going in with the Boys and Girls Club in the background. We move into the revitalization plan. So obviously, the first 1A and 1B is the ones that bid since the last meeting. And the ones in light blue are the ones that we're working on design right now. So first up is Steinmetz, which will be the Freshman Leadership Cup Academy. And we were able to award all the work, which is fantastic. It came in under budget, which meant that we could award not only the, the play courts outside, but also any, the additional paving that was out there, plus the site fencing around the entire perimeter. Also the entrance canopy. Here's an example of some of the scope, the areas we're gonna be touching within the building. As you can see, there's like a large concentration in the, the original building, 1922 building, as well as obviously the wings in the 1972 portion, which will be first to, I think we start working that in a matter of two weeks. I think the 17th of June, you'll start to see crews move in to do the abatement work. Here's a couple of renderings of how we hope it will look when it's all said and done. You can see the play courts on the left-hand side. And on the right is the proposed entrance canopy into the new main secure lobby. And here's another couple of views. Sorry, I know I'm going through this pretty quick, but I can always go back to the slide if you need me to. And here's an exonometric, we've actually shown this one before, but this is just an exonometric view of our, the main kind of secure vestibule with the main office and the nurses' suite and then the male and female toilets at the end. So this is all gonna be renovated where the boys locker and main offices just now. Here's an example of when you come in through the, the main secure vestibule. This is what you'll see straight in front of the gymnasium entrance before you go down the corridor to the cafeteria. And here is the cafeteria that's gonna be, we're gonna be maintaining the barrel vaulted ceiling in there and dressing it up, bringing a lot more light and replacing the windows. Here is the fitness center that's flanked either side by the boys and girls' team rooms with a custodial suite at the end. This is the opposite side of the gym from the main office and nurses' suite. And here's a couple of the examples of the science rooms that are going to occur on the second and third floor of the 1922 wing that we're gonna be getting to as soon as the building vacates, the end of June. Here's a rendering of one of the typical science classrooms. And this is down in the basement first floor area where we have the CTE space. So we've got a side which will have all the kind of work benches and the, through the glazed openings is where the, the computer lab, the clean area is. Over to Van Collier. Again, this one, we opened bids and we're able to award everything that was, is part of the documents plus the ad alternates. So we have the new parking lot to the side. We have a community track that runs around the grass area. We also have some island and signage for the, the existing parking lot so we can help direct cars the right direction so they're not causing a bit of a traffic jam when we have parent drop-off, oh sorry, student drop-off. Again, scope document, or the, the scope plans that show the areas that we're touching. I would point out that we have built into the bid documents unit pricing for refinishing floors, ceilings, painting classrooms. So if there is additional money remaining, it's still within the approved scope from SED. So we'd like to try and tackle more classrooms if time and money allow. And this is the main entrance that we, as I say, we've got both the covered entrance and the, the signage to the side, which is a good view from the existing parking lot right now. So that is where we, when you approach it from the existing parking lot, we're gonna have main entrance signage above the structure that leads you down into the new door that will lead into the secure vestibule off of the main office. This is our new cafeteria with the daylight coming through, which is a big improvement from work they have just now. And also the community stem room that we're creating where the existing cafeteria is. And this is our kindergarten classroom on the first floor. Obviously, we're, we're gonna be readdressing all the finishes in this space because it is currently the main office. Next up, we have the projects that don't fall under either the revitalization project or the pre-revitalization projects. We have Pleasant Valley, Yates, and Hamilton Elementary School office upgrades. Yates, we opened bids back in, I think, late February. That one's under construction right now, working with Brian Dangler to get this project delivered. The images you see on the right-hand side are actually what used to be the old kind of girls' bathroom that fell into disrepair and was no longer used. It's now being converted into a custodial suite so that we can relocate the custodian from adjacent to the cafeteria and allow for a larger, more fully functional warming kitchen over there, which is in red in this image over here. We're still maintaining and pushing forward with security across the district. We'll be working with de-automation to get that finished. So it's a long progress, we've got 18 buildings to, to tackle. But I think from dealing with, well, working with Jeff, he's seen marked improvement. Being able to monitor the doors for one. There's another one example of Fulton, which is where Van Collier students and staff are moving into in September. The, the floors have come out great. I think you'll see that the, there's been a real kind of positive change in that space, especially the, the gym, which I don't think I have an image of, but the, the gym is fantastic. If you don't get an opportunity to see it, it's come out really, really well. And again, this is the, the overview. We're, we're right at the, you know, right at the start, midway through 2024. We've got a year of construction at both Van Collier and Flaska ahead of us. In the meantime, we're obviously working on the next phase, which is our high school core, Mont Pleasant commissary, and Kane Elementary School renovations. I don't know how quickly I was, but do you have any questions?
Any questions, board members? Board member Kathy?
What is the capacity of the stands in Mount Pleasant?
The new, 1,493. Of those, I think there's maybe 20 ADA seating, seated areas. So there's a ramp that leads up to, and then there's like 20 ADA and the rest, I think it's like 473 are regular seats.
So close to 1,500 then?
Yeah.
And is that field intended to be used by the 9th grade academy? Or what's going in the fields that are immediately adjacent to the 9th grade academy?
So the 9th grade academy, yeah. So we don't, there's nothing planned. In fact, I could probably go back to, let me see if I can go back to the plan. There's nothing planned for the grass area of, of the Freshman Leadership Academy, but it's just the hardcore area between the parking lots. So if I, I think I'm right.
I just was wondering if physical education is for 9th graders is gonna be in that confines or, or actually having them come down here to Mount Pleasant to use the facilities outside here?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it was half a block almost just down. So I think there, my understanding of the plan is the district would, you'd lies Mont Pleasant's track and field wherever possible. The proximity is, is key, I guess, to being able to be used. But right now, as I say, the, the grass field remains as is although we are providing replacement fencing around to try and secure it. I guess there's some issues with dog walkers and such and broken glass. So we'll obviously look to eliminate that where possible. And then, as I say, the, the hardcore surfacing has three pickleball courts and basketball court, which has athletic lighting over, LED lighting that will help light that during the evenings.
Thank you.
Board member Jamaica?
I really wanna say why pickleball every time. I do. I know why. It just, it gets me every time. Like, I understand the idea of community use. I didn't realize that much of our community actually plays pickleball. Okay, cool. I think some kids would like, as a matter of fact, there's definitely some kids that ask for more basketball courts, but I digress. Are there gender-neutral bathrooms in the plans for Steinmetz?
Yes.
That's it.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
No problem. I'll see you next time.
Excited about the updates and, yeah, it's awesome. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for participating in Scrabble Rama. I think it's great to support our schools.
We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members. Any comments?
Okay, no, no. I just wanna say, summer enrichment's going to happen. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be hot. Everybody just have lots of water bottles.
Dr. Koto? Sorry. I just wanna take one quick moment before we close. Tonight, I just wanna recognize Dr. Leah Kedley, who is here. She's been moved forward to be the next Assistant Superintendent of Innovation, Equity, and Engagement. After three very throwarounds of amazing candidates from far-off Texas, Connecticut, really thorough and, I think, revealing interview process. Leah, we don't have to look very far because Leah rose to the top of these candidates. She embodies all the good in our district. She's guided Hamilton in a way that really shows us as one school community where she can help our district go as she has done at Hamilton. So I just wanted to take a quick moment to recognize and congratulate Dr. Leah Kedley, our next Assistant Superintendent of IEE.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We're so happy to have you again.
Dr. Kedley, come on up, say a few words. Okay.
It's new territory for me here. But thank you. I do wanna thank Dr. Koto, Board President Rivera, and board members for this opportunity to continue to serve the Schenectady community and to now lead the IEE department and the work that we will do. I'm thankful to the Hamilton Elementary team, as well as my district colleagues and support that I've been given from everyone, and as well as my fellow principals and my mentor over here, she's the best, that, for believing and supporting in me as the principal of Hamilton, as we work together to make such a positive improvement since last March. I'm looking forward to building off the foundation and success that Dr. Koto and the team have accomplished and celebrate continued achievements as we continue to build partnerships within our community. I love this city and district and I'm truly grateful to be a part of the team. And of course, I have to thank and share my gratitude for the love and support from my family and friends who are watching from home in full support as I really immerse myself here in the Schenectady community. So thank you for welcoming me.
Thank you. Is now called to discuss a particular item related to HR topic. I'll accept a motion to go into executive session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Jamaica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Have a great evening, everyone. And again, congratulations, Dr. Kedley. Congratulations, you're welcome.
Congratulations.
Have a good evening, everyone.